Evening. The July 27th, 2017 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Jack Hicks, Family Life Pastor of Life Bridge Church. Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Lord, as we thank you for the day, we know that you hear our petitions, and we thank you for this privilege tonight to be able to pray with this council, this mayor. We lift them up to you, Lord. We pray that you give them the wisdom as they undertake the business of the city of Longview, this great city. Not only them, Lord, but our police, our firemen, our EMTs, all the emergency responders. We lift them up to you, Lord. Protect them. Draw them into your wing and put your arm around them. Not only do we pray for this council, we pray for all the councils that meet throughout this great nation. And at this time, we lift our presence and the cabinet up to you, our senators, our congressmen, all elected officials. Let them realize, Lord, that their authority comes from you, as your Book of Romans tells us. No man has authority except through me, and we thank you for that. We thank you for being here tonight, be with this council, this mayor, watch over them tonight. Let them use your wisdom as they guide this city, and we give you praise in your name. And everybody say, "Amen." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patrick Hicks, thank you for your kind words. Tonight, employee recognition. The Texas Association of Governmental Information Technology Managers recently held their annual conference in Galveston, Texas. TAGITM is a group of IT professionals employed by cities, counties, school districts, and appraisal districts throughout Texas. Every year, TAGITM recognizes members for outstanding performance in the areas of leadership and innovation. This year, Blake Gore was awarded the Rising Star Award. The Rising Star Award is presented to a member of the organization who has demonstrated the potential for stepping into leadership positions within the organization and in government informational technology arena. Nominees are evaluated in areas of leadership skill and behavior, innovative and effective use of technology, organizational strategy alignment, and their ability to manage change. Blake is a member of the City of Longview Informational Service Division. He's been at the city for nine years and supervises a team of five. His current title is Enterprise Solutions Designer for Applications. Blake is also a certified public manager and holds multiple other advanced IT certifications. Here to present the Rising Star Award to Blake is Tony Toll. Tony has spent the last 15 years working as the IT Director for the City of Granbury. Tony serves on the Executive Board of Directors for TAGITM and the Board of Directors of the Texas Municipal League. Tony, would you please come forward? And Blake, please come forward.
Mayor, council, city council and city manager. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. As you said, I'm Tony Toll, Executive Board Member for the Texas Association of Government IT Managers. Every year for our annual conference, we accept nominations from over 200 city, counties, and government entities for our Rising Star Award. Our nomination committee comprises members, evaluates submittals, and awards a single member that award. This year, this award went to a member of the City of Longview Informational Services Division, Blake Gore. I'd like to speak a moment about Blake. Blake is described as having a participative leadership style. Participative leadership values the input of team members and peers. Participant leadership boosts employee morale because employees make contributions to the decision-making process. It causes them to feel as if their opinion matters. The City of Longview's core values are accountability, teamwork, integrity, and professionalism. Blake embodies these four values with everything he does. He includes the team as much as possible in making often extensive research to provide as much information to the team. Blake has a natural moral conviction to do the right thing in all circumstances. Finally, he demonstrates professionalism by understanding the link between his job responsibilities, overall organizational goals and needs, and performs his job with the broader goals in mind. It is my distinct honor and privilege to present the 2017 Taggart Rising Star Award
Tony, I want to thank you for coming from Granbury to present this award. It means a lot to us that you take the time out of your busy schedule to come here and to present this to Blake. We're very proud of Blake. Blake is a wonderful member of our IT team. Just so you all know, the IT department scares me to death. I know, that's not my area. I stay as far away as I can. I'm so illiterate when it comes to that. But thanks to Blake, I don't have to be literate because he does it for us, and we're very proud to have him as our recipient. You represent our city. As you said, over 200 people were involved in this, and Blake was chosen. So it speaks a lot for our department, for our city, for our leadership, and we thank you, Tony, for coming down and presenting this award for us. Thank you very much. In my next life, I'm going to be an IT whiz. I can tell already. Tonight, for community recognition, I'm going to recognize an amazing young lady who is an amazing volunteer who never seeks credit. She's a volunteer with the East Texas Blume Racers for over 20 years. She's involved with the Longview ISD PTA. She's a founding board member of Legacy Longview. She's also a member of the Junior League of Longview and probably 1,000 other things that I am not aware of. But what I am aware of is this. She is always there, always smiling, always serving, and never looking for credit. And that's the kind of volunteer that we need in Longview over and over and over again. Tammy Skinner, please come forward.[482.53][482.53][applause][483.53][483.53][applause][484.53][484.53][applause][485.53][485.53][applause][486.53][486.53][applause][487.53][487.53][applause][488.53][488.53][applause][489.53][489.53][applause][490.53][490.53][applause] She had absolutely no idea why she was here tonight. I called Tammy and said, "Could you please come to the council?" I mean, I don't like people to know what I'm doing, because I don't know what I'm doing half the time, but I like for this to be a surprise. Because I want you to know, I mean, I've worked with Tammy in a lot of areas, through Legacy Longview, through the Blume Racers, through all things that she does, and I can tell you, this is what you get every time you see Tammy. You get the smiling, happy, joyful person to be around that is pleasant and servant in everything that she does. And Tammy, I tell you, you represent what I look at as being community recognition leaders in Longview, and I thank you for your service to this community. You're the best. Thank you so much.[530.04][530.04][applause][531.04][531.04][applause][532.04][532.04][applause][533.04][533.04][applause][534.04][534.04][applause][535.04][535.04][applause][536.04][536.04][applause][537.04][537.04][applause][538.04][538.04][applause][539.04][539.04][applause][540.04][540.04][applause] Thank you, Tammy. Go get that Blume Race going.[543.04][543.04][laughing][544.04][544.04][applause][545.04][545.04][applause][546.04][546.04][applause][547.04][547.04][applause][548.04][548.04][applause][549.04][549.04][applause][550.04][550.04][applause][551.04][551.04][applause][552.04][552.04][applause][553.04][553.04][applause][554.04][554.04][applause][555.04][555.04][applause][556.04][556.04][applause] When you have no idea what's coming, that's what a servant's all about. She had no idea what she was here for, and that's the way she serves our community, and it's really nice to see that and in awe that we have so many people that do that in our community, and it's going to be so much fun to continue to do this every time we have a council meeting. So thank you all for bearing with me. Citizen comments. Now, I have one card. Ms. Terry Dunn.[578.04][578.04][applause]
Well, for those of you who don't know, my name is Terry Dunn, and more importantly, I am Jim Finley's older sister.[591.66][591.66][laughter] And when I called Jim to see about speaking in front of the council, he did not ask me what I was going to say or anything else. He just said, "You have three minutes, and I will cut you off."[605.16][605.16][laughter] So, and you're supposed to take a picture.[608.82][608.82][laughter] So I'll get to it. On August 17th, at 7:00 at the Pine Tree Road Auditorium, I think we have the opportunity as a community to hear a very special speaker. That is Pastor Charles Foster Johnson. Pastor Johnson, for those of you who may not know, is a Baptist minister who is the founder and executive director of Pastors for Texas Children. This is a statewide organization, and they have been a very strong voice in the advocacy for public education. He will begin that morning in Frisco, where he will address Frisco ISD at their convocation. He has agreed to come down to Longview that evening to engage in what he calls a community conversation. And then he will be spending the night, and the next morning, he will address Longview ISD at their convocation. I wanted to extend an invitation to what I feel like are our community leaders and to anyone who is within earshot. If you don't know much about the organization, I did provide you with a handout. One side is the save the date. On the other side, it kind of encapsulates what the organization stands for, as well as directs you to their website. But in a nutshell, they basically believe that for too long, we have politicized and manipulated our children's education. Education is not a political issue. It does not belong to a party. In addition to that, they also believe that education is for all children, and that is what the Texas Constitution provides for. In addition to that, they do not feel like vouchers are a solution. Now, this talk is not just for parents. This is not just for school administrators, and it's not just for teachers. It's about a community. I have often said that a school is the heart of a community, and you know this. You know, what binds us together better than, you know, our sports teams doing well at the high school, our school mascot, things of that sort. But more importantly, it also, I'm a product of public education, and I bet most of you can relate to this. More importantly, what the school does provide is that place to...[765.23][765.23][laughter]
I'm not touching this.[767.23][767.23][laughter] Jim, that's all on you, buddy.[771.12][771.12][laughter]
It is a place where we first started to learn those rules, and we did that in that safe environment of school where we had teachers to guide us, and it was where we first got our start in learning how to be part of a community, and we can't lose that here in our community. So I want to extend the invitation to you. What is not on this, but I would like to make you aware, there will be a reception prior to the speaking event, and that is at 6:00 in the Pine Tree School Board Meeting Room, and we would love for you to come. There'll be refreshments, and then we'll walk over to hear the presentation. So mark it on your calendars, the 17th. Thank you very much.[817.20][817.20][applause]
Thank you, Terry. I hope everyone watches this on TV, because when that buzzer went off, did you see her look at Jim?[825.32][825.32][laughter] She was daring you to say something, Jim, just daring you.[830.12][830.12][laughter]
Did you notice how he cowered? It's from years of abuse.[833.12][833.12][laughter]
Yes, I did.[835.12][835.12][laughter] We might need you in executive session, Terry.[841.12][841.12][laughter][842.12][842.12][applause][843.12][843.12][laughter][844.12][844.12][applause][845.12][845.12][laughter] Shelley wiped Jim's brow.[848.23][848.23][laughter][849.23][849.23][applause] That did me good. Wow. Sorry, Jim, we're laughing at you, buddy. Okay, presentation. This is a proclamation commemorating the Open a Door Campaign with Doors Youth Transition Center. We present it to Doors staff Brenda Daybeavis, Charity Mootsie, Wendy Leonard, Dawn Mitchell, and Board Members April Baker, Chris Nishihara, Candace Jones, and Michael Pierrefoy. Okay, this is the Doors' first annual Open a Door Campaign, August 1st, 2017. Whereas Doors has requested the mayor by proclamation to recognize August 1st, 2017 as their annual Open a Door Campaign in the City of Longview, and Doors provides opportunities for homeless, poverty-stricken young people to begin steps out of poverty and assist them in stabilizing housing, gaining and improving employment, addressing physical and mental health needs, and reaching educational goals. Doors has experienced an 81% success rate in guiding young people towards improved life circumstances, including becoming self-sufficient, breaking the poverty cycle, contributing to our community as citizens, having hope for their future. So now therefore, I add by the authority vested me as mayor of the City of Longview, do proclaim August 1st, 2017 as Doors' annual Open a Door Campaign in Longview. Ladies? Okay, let me just tell you this. Doors is a phenomenal organization in our community that we could not do without. You all do so many good things in our community that are irreplaceable, and we appreciate that, the time and the effort. Brenda has, I've known Brenda forever, and it's been my privilege, and she's been instrumental in our homeless task force, helping us guide this process. And for each one of you all, you all do such a job that is so necessary, and I thank you from all of us in the City of Longview, to all of you all, and to all those kids that you all have helped. 81% success rate. That's phenomenal. That deserves a round of applause.[987.01][987.01][applause][988.01][988.01][applause][989.01][989.01][applause] That's the picture of a successful service organization right there. Thank you all again. Public safety update. Chief Bishop.[1027.25][1027.25][applause]
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Willard. For tonight's update, I'd like to remind everybody of a couple of great upcoming events that we have coming up. We're now accepting applications for our Citizens Police Academy that will begin on September 7th. They'll meet Tuesdays and Thursday nights from 6:15 to 8:15 p.m. Anyone interested in learning more about your police department and how it operates can download an application at longviewtexas.gov/cpa, and we'd love to have a full classroom for this Citizens Police Academy. We'll also be offering the same academy in Spanish. That will begin September 11th and run through October 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Wednesday night, Monday and Wednesday nights, and anyone interested in that can contact Officer Myra Gonzalez at 903-720-6656 for an application for that academy as well. We also are taking applications for our free women's safety course. That again will be coming up on September 18th through the 23rd from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Anyone interested in learning more about women's safety, workplace violence, women's handgun safety, firearm simulator, and a day at our firing range are encouraged to register. The deadline for registration is September 15th, and for more information, they can contact 903-808-3388, or Officer Christie Bryan, or download a registration form at This is by far one of our most popular courses, and it fills up quick, so anyone interested, we ask that they please get their registration in. Also, I'm going to talk about this until National Night Out, asking everybody to save the date for our National Night Out kickoff party. It'll be Tuesday, September 5th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Mod Cobb. Last year, we had well over 115 National Night Out parties, and we want to do better than that this year, so I encourage everybody to save that date to come out to the kickoff party, register your neighborhood or your crime watch group for a National Night Out party, and that'll be coming up in the second Tuesday in October. Also, this week, we finished up, our school resource officers finished up one of our last summer camp for the year with the Boys and Girls Club. We had an opportunity to spend some time with the youth there over the last week and teach them a little bit about what officers do. Today happened to be fingerprinting day, so they got to lift some fingerprints off the police cars and had different demonstrations throughout the week. So we had an opportunity to go down and visit with them today and spend some time with them. Also, I'd like to give a shout out and a congratulations to Sergeant Buddy Mappus. Sergeant Buddy Mappus is a sergeant over our Traffic Division. On July 16th, he celebrated 40 years of service with the city. Today, we had a little cake for him, and over the next couple of weeks, we'll get him here to formally recognize his years of service, but want to give a shout out to Sergeant Mappus and congratulate him on 40 years. 40 years is a long time.[1242.01][1242.01][laughter] So with that, answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Chief Bishop?
Was there any cost to that class for the women?
No, there's no cost to that.[1256.01][1256.01][applause]
Chief, do the women have to bring their own firearms?
They can either bring their own firearm, or we'll provide one for them.[1264.13][1264.13][applause]
Chief, why do I get invited to all the events that don't have cake?[1269.33][1269.33][laughter]
The what?[1271.33][1271.33][applause]
I didn't get invited to the event that had cake.[1273.83][1273.83][applause] You invited me to events that don't have cake.[1276.41][1276.41][laughter][1277.41][1277.41][applause]
Well, we'll make sure you get invited the next time.
Okay. I like cake. I'll come when there's cake. All right. Thank you. Chief Tillman, if you have some cake, don't show it tonight if I don't get invited to it.[1289.91][1289.91][laughter]
I'll keep that in mind, Mayor.[1293.01][1293.01][laughter] Mayor Matt, members of council, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you on some things that have been happening in the Fire Department since we last met. We are fortunate in the Fire Department to have several outreach programs here in Longview where we get out into the community and we educate our citizens on dangers that are out there in front of them every day. One of the ones we've been fortunate on, this was actually our fourth year to pull this one off, is our Summer Safety Day. We partner with the Department of Family Protective Services, the Longview Police Department, and our own City Parks Department to put on this event where we really focus on water safety and hot car safety. You can see the sign there on that particular day. That was probably about 2:30 in the afternoon. It was 97, almost 98 degrees outside, and the temperature inside that car was 137 degrees. And unfortunately, this is happening all too frequently. There was a story just on the news, I think, yesterday where there were two fatalities, not here fortunately, but somewhere else. But we have experienced this in Longview, so we certainly want to throw that out there for our citizens to always take caution whenever they're carrying their kids, pets, anything in those vehicles. It's just too hot for them to tolerate it. But then on the water side, on the Fire Department's side, we got to get into the pool with the kids, show them some of our equipment, demonstrate some of the things that we do on the water rescue side of things, and talk about just general pool safety, being around, moving water safety. I never would have thought, this was the first year we tried this. We put that boat in the water, and those kids ate it up. They, when they found out that we were going to get to get out in the middle of the pool and turn the boat over with them in it, they lined up. They were lined up, almost out to the sidewalk. But they had an excellent time. The guys did a great job, and it was all in the name of fun and educating these kids on how to be safe around water. The SBA long program that I spoke to you previously about, this was something that we undertook as a result of the tornado that we experienced back around Memorial Day weekend. The results there are in front of you. Out of everybody in the city that was affected by that tornado, the SBA long program issued 12 applications. 11 of those actually got returned. Four of those were approved for a total amount of just over $108,000 to help our local Longview citizens recover from damage that they sustained in the event that they were either uninsured or underinsured from the results of that tornado. So I appreciate our citizens taking advantage of this. I wish there would have been more, but congratulations to the ones that got that assistance. Code Red, I told you I'm going to keep talking about this one. I was pleased to find out today that our numbers are improving on this. Back in June, we had 37,882 people that were registered. As of today, we had 38,044, so we're showing some gradual increase, and we just want to keep that going up. This is a free service that your city provides, so we encourage our citizens to take advantage of it, to be sure they get those timely weather notifications when something bad is potentially going to happen. And finally, I don't have to tell you this, it's getting hot outside. We still haven't, I don't think, have crossed 100 degrees, but it's just around the corner. We're getting close. Since this time last, I'm sorry, since the last council meeting, we've responded to six incidents of heat-related illness or injury, so we just want to encourage our citizens to know the warning signs of heat exhaustion and/or heat stroke, and to take necessary precautions and to stay hydrated, and if you think you're experiencing a heat-related emergency, don't hesitate to call 911. Time is essential. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Tillman?
Great.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief. I'm really appreciative of the SBA program for the storm recovery victims. I'm just curious, I noticed that 11 applications were issued. Did only 11 people show up, or do we have a roundabout figure? I'm just curious, because you guys did great publicity on that. I saw it everywhere.
Right.
How many people just showed up literally?
As far as I know, there were only the original 12. Eleven of those were residential. The other one was a business.
Okay.
The four that got actually awarded were all residential.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief. Great job.
Thank you, Mayor.[1524.51][1524.51][applause]
We're now to a discussion item. We're to discuss recommendations, implementation of the mayor's homelessness task force. And what this is about, council, is it's our time to discuss what we talked about two weeks ago. It's a citizen's time to discuss what they would like to discuss with us, because this task force was put together to provide a framework, and that framework will then require implementation. But implementation will require our work on a few of the items and the rest of the community's work on the rest of the items. And so what I want to do tonight is discuss some of the items that we as a council will be looking at to determine how we want to move forward, or if we want to move forward on these items that were recommended by the task force. And so what I'd like to do is just, there's a few individuals that I want to just have come up and talk real briefly about things that will affect us as a council and our city budget, and things that we will have to be looking forward to how we plan to proceed forward with that. So no particular order. Chief Bishop, you want to start me out here?
Sure.
Chief Bishop's going to talk about our homeless outreach team, the hot officers that we talked about implementing for the community.
Mayor, one of the requests that you had during your meetings with the task force was the creation of a homeless outreach team through the police department. Basically, what this homeless outreach team would be, would be two certified police officers that would have specialized training in crisis intervention. Some of the things that they would be tasked with would be that they would work proactively with the homeless population, create community partnerships with nonprofits and local businesses, conduct outreach within the community, and refer homeless to available resources that are out there in the community. There are several police departments that have started programs like this. Lubbock PD, Austin PD, Houston PD are having some success with their programs. Some of the costs associated with this program would be, my recommendation would be at least two officers that would do this full-time. The cost associated with that would run approximately $150,000 a year to do that. I've had the opportunity to visit with the police chief from Lubbock and talk specifically about their program, and they seem to be having good success with their program there in Lubbock.
Chief, I appreciate all your research on this. I know we talked about this months ago. You got right on it and started looking at the statistics and what Lubbock has done and how it's benefited their community and how we might. And you all understand, anything we do, nothing will transfer from one city to another exactly, because every city has different needs and different circumstances. So we have to tailor what we do to Longview, but it's nice to use something that is working someplace else. And so I appreciate Chief Bishop looking into this, and the reason that I really bring And the reason that I really bring this up is the big number, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars it will take to do this. We do not have that in our city budget. And so, that's something I want to make you all aware of so that we can look to see how we might accomplish this or if we can accomplish this and where we go from here. But Chief, I appreciate your update. Thank you on that information. And anybody have questions, Chief Bishop, please?
Um, Chief, so you would have to hire two new officers to do this? You couldn't use people that you already have available?
We could take a look at that option if we had to do that. Adding two additional officers to specifically deal with this would help us be able to keep our resources, you know, in other areas that we have. If the funding wasn't available, then we could go back and, you know, take a hard look at it and see how we might make it work if we had to.
Seems like this is a really good opportunity for us right here. So, I'd hate to see it just fade away because we didn't have the money to do it.
Right. And hopefully, we will find that because what I really don't, I mean, we're struggling so hard to keep our force at full strength. And we've seen the benefits, obviously, of keeping our force at full strength. And I don't want to backslide on that either. So, I just bring this forth to y'all so we can start looking. And I've talked to Mr. Willard about this and how we might look for these dollars if we could. But Chief, I have just one question. You may not know this exactly, but what would their day-to-day activities look like for the community?
Well, it would be out there building these community partnerships with other organizations that can provide resources to the individuals that we come in contact with.
Yes.
And there's, and you know from your committee and your task force, there's a whole lot of organizations that are out there. We've already been working internally with a lot of different organizations. And the key to this is going to be being proactive with it, not reactive like we are now. We're reactive, where we go out, we answer the call, we try to solve the problem. And then, you know, the officers try to get back in service as quickly as they can, so.
Because a big part of this is if we can, we would like to keep these individuals out of our judicial system because there's no reason, there's no benefit to putting them in jail. It's a burden upon the county, the city, and the taxpayers. So, if they could find ways to keep them out of that situation, it would certainly benefit our community.
Right, because if they're, it's harder to get them the service that they need.
Please.
I would guess or expect that the officers we're talking about would also receive some training on mental health issues as that would, you know, be part and parcel of their job and then helping connect them with the right, you know, if mental health issues are appropriate, those resources that are already in our community or could be expanded upon. But, so to me, I am a hundred percent on board with this idea. I think it's a great recommendation and really important for us moving forward. But I would also like to see it be addressing mental health issues. So, those officers would be kind of handling both of those.
It would have to. There would be no reason. They couldn't work without it.
The crisis intervention training and the mental health. They have a mental health piece officer course that the officers would go through as well, a forty-hour course on how to identify and deal with individuals that are in a crisis situation.
And when you look at the statistics that we presented at the presentation in Lubbock, they had, I forget the exact numbers, thousands of contacts with the homeless population. And only twenty-six of those thousands, three thousand or so, thirty-seven hundred contacts, only twenty-six times did the individual refuse treatment or refuse help or assistance. And that's an amazing percentage of success. Twenty-six or so out of thirty-seven hundred or something, my numbers aren't exactly right, they're close to that. But that's the impact that this can have. And like I say, it's just building that bridge, which is, that's what we're lacking is that bridge, the connectivity. And so, that's what I'm looking for, Chief. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
I love the idea. I'm on board with the concept. But what I will ask is that we really take a close look to see if we can utilize, I know our par officers have a full load pretty much right now. But I would ask that you guys take a look at how can we utilize our par officers and our school resource officers? I know that we have a full police force. And maybe even look at some shared responsibility. Have, you know, one officer work at this time of day and the other one at, you know, even if we have four, because we're not as large as some of the cities that have implemented this because I'm very familiar, we've discussed this at TML. And I think we need to do it. But just as a means of, you know, watching the budget from the budgetary perspective, if we could maybe look at that a little bit because I absolutely think we need to do this. And I also would like to give a shout out to the department because I know a lot of our officers are already working closely with organizations. So, maybe take a look and identify those, you know, some of your officers who have some skill set already in place. That may be a good idea to see if we can maybe bridge that gap as the mayor was saying and utilize some of the talent that we already have. Because I know I've run into a lot of our guys at various nonprofit entities before. So, that may be a good starting place as well.
One of the things that I would do is if we create this, is I would attach them to our par unit.
Okay.
They would be within that unit. And then the par officers would help secondary, you know, on issues that they have in their respective beats.
Okay. And another question I have also, I know they're going to be building relationships with different entities in the community to help the homeless. Where will they be based? Like, if we have two dedicated officers or hypothetically four, if there are shared responsibilities, where are they going to be placed? Are they going to be in a certain area of Longview or are they going to be in various areas? Or is it based on a call-by-call basis? How's that going to work? Because I know we have a larger population downtown sometimes. And then we have other pockets of our community where the homeless seem to habitate, so.
I would envision them probably being assigned somewhere out into the community like our par officers are with the individual officers.
Okay.
Really haven't gotten that far yet logistically. I know one of the issues that we're dealing with with the police department is space. So, out in the community, probably in a par office, something like that is probably where we would.
We've got space at the train station and we have space over on Berthong Street.
We do.
So, we have space there. Very good. Thank you.
And would these be fully certified officers, go through the same academy, field training first before they get their specialized training or are we kind of getting ahead of ourselves?
No, we would probably, what we would do internally is open it up to officers that would be interested. So, these would probably be officers that have been with the department for at least two years and may need a little additional training. But we wouldn't have to hire somebody and wait for them to go through the academy and all of that.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate your diligence on this. You've been very helpful in providing information for us. Good questions, council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Karen, would you be next?
Good evening, Mayor, council, Mr. Willard. One of the items that was brought up in the task force meeting was impark usage, specifically those laying on benches. And certainly, we can't restrict them from utilizing public parks. However, we can do some things to, with the benches so that they can't lay on them. And so, that doesn't look as good as people would like for our parks to look. But then, it provides, so what we can do with our park benches specifically in the downtown area is we can get a fabricated piece of metal to put on the benches because they're long. And that way, we wouldn't allow for them to lay on those benches. And so, we have a hundred and fifteen benches in the downtown area. We have an additional twenty-one that are going in on Center Street with that project. And so, the cost of each of those is a hundred and five dollars. That does not include shipping or installation. But then also, we have some that are a little bit longer, so may require two pieces. So, you're looking at a total cost of somewhere around twenty thousand dollars. And that would be installed by our crews, either us or Public Works, that would be able to do that. So, that was one of the items that was concerned, so.
And I've had some very lively discussion this week on this topic, which really surprised me. But it's been very engaging and entertaining. And what I want people to understand is we're not restricting anyone from doing anything or telling someone they can't utilize city property. What we're trying to do is make it where everyone can utilize the city property and no one abuses the city property because it is all paid for by the taxpayers. And we want everybody to be able to sit and enjoy it. But what we don't want to do, we don't want to encourage people to sleep on those benches. We want them to go to a shelter where it's safe. Sleeping on a bench at night is not a safe alternative for a person. And we know that we have enough beds in our community to house people every single night if they want to bed. So, we're trying to encourage them to go seek a better alternative. We're not punishing them because they're homeless and saying you can't sleep on our benches. That is not our goal. Our intention is to help them, not to hurt anyone and to help our community become a more business-friendly community where we don't have the unsightly opportunities we have at this point in time. It's not good for certain areas of town and certain businesses. It spends a lot of money to keep their businesses looking nice and staying nice. And so, this is not a punishment, as someone told me this week. And I was quite entertained by some of the comments that, we're not trying to punish. We're trying to help in everything that we do. We're trying to help individuals seek a better solution than laying around on a bench because that's, it probably can't be a worse place to be at night than on a park bench in the open air and in the element. So, that's the intent behind this discussion, council?
Question. Thank you. Did you say a hundred and fifteen benches downtown alone?
Yes, ma'am. And then an additional twenty-one that are going on Center Street with that project.
Okay, so a hundred and fifteen plus.
So, it'll be a hundred and thirty-six total in the downtown area, so.
We're about to purchase twenty, how many?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay. What's going to happen to what we currently have in place? Because if we're doing it, and I have to ask this question because twenty thousand dollars may not seem like a lot, but it is a lot. And so, my concern is, I'm not sure we need to go back and get rid of those that we have. But perhaps moving forward, we can implement that with the purchase of new benches. How much does it cost for the ones that we're about to buy, the ones that are for Center Street? Do you have a number on that, just by itself?
I don't have the cost on that in Longview.
Well, I don't think you're saying it would be a new bench.
No, you're going to retrofit the old bench.
Yeah, this is just retrofitting the existing ones. But I think the new benches are typically around eight hundred dollars per bench. And they do sell them as one unit. They're about the same price or maybe a little bit more because there's additional metal there.
Have we given any thought to not doing all of them? And the reason I say that is because my other concern is even if we retrofit the ones that are down there already, if someone needs to, you can't make people do anything. I'm a firm believer in that. So, if they want to sleep there, even though we now know, thanks to the mayor, we have enough beds, some people are just going to want to sleep there. So, what's to say that if we go back and we retrofit those benches, the people that want to sleep there are not going to sleep on the ground? Or they're not going to begin, have we thought through any of that?
There's nothing. We can't, we, and like I said, in this task force, we initially started this. We can only help those that want help.
Right.
We cannot help those that do not want help. We want to help everyone, but there are some individuals that do not want our help. And so, we have to do the best we can for those that want to seek a better life for themselves. And we cannot force anyone to go anywhere or do anything. It's all public property.
Right.
And it's individual choices. So, if they want to sleep on the ground, although we do have a camping ordinance that will not allow them to do that. And Mr. Finley's going to talk next about those things. But there are things that are just not allowed that we have to uphold if we want to be a consistent community.
And just as Chief Bishop does not have that currently in his budget with the hot team, we don't have that funding in our current budget. So, if city council were to allocate whatever dollars you feel would be appropriate that we would implement to that point. So, if we didn't feel that twenty thousand, you wanted to do twenty thousand at this time, we could do it in pieces, certainly.
And is that just specifically for downtown or have we looked at all of the benches? Are we looking at just one area? Because they're, Longview's vast. So, are we just specifically targeting the downtown area or have we looked at all the benches? Because I also believe that what we do in one area, we need to do everywhere. So, I mean, have we done that?
We were specifically tasked with looking at the downtown area at this time. However, we do know that the majority of our benches do not have these types of things in them either. And so, again, as we go through and put in new benches within our park system, we could look at putting those that have that there already. And then also, we'd have to take a look at if we want to get into retrofitting the other benches as well. So, again, we serve at the pleasure of the council and we'll do whatever you guys.
Well, the only reason I'm asking those questions is because, you know, Jesus said, "You'll have the poor with you always." And just reflecting on that, I'm reminded that if they don't, if they can't go downtown, they're going somewhere. And so, if we're really trying to get a hold on this and point them in the right direction, then maybe we need to look at the entire scope, the big picture.
I think we will as time goes on. And remember this, we're trying to make it easier for people to choose a shelter. We want them to choose a shelter because that's where they need to be, is in the shelter. We're trying to make it easier for that to happen. And we're also trying to make it easier for people to enjoy downtown and not avoid it. We don't want people to avoid our downtown. We need our downtown to be viable. And so, these are measures that we're taking to help everyone involved. And please understand, we're not trying to punish anybody. That's not the intention of anything that we're done or doing or planning on doing in this situation. So, we want to give them help and hope. That's what we're trying to do.
You already ordered the twenty-one?
The twenty-one benches?
For Center Street.
For Center Street? I believe so, yes.
All right, well, then my ideas moved. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Appreciate your presentation.
She's gone, right?
Someone start the timer. You've got three minutes.
All right. In listening to the mayor's task force and discussing with the mayor and the direction that we wanted to do is to kind of look at some ordinances in other communities and tweaking some of our own ordinances to deal with the homeless aspect. And I had my assistant, Terry Jackson, work on this. He's our prosecutor in municipal court. And he pulled ordinances from throughout the state. And we looked at ordinances from Dallas, Austin, Fort Worth, San Antonio. And we also looked at the programs in some of those communities as well. Like in Lubbock with the, they have certain programs to assist the homeless in the community outreach. And to try to come up with some ideas without, you know, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. We're trying to tailor it to where it can come to our community and serve the purpose that this task force has sought us to do. And the first thing that we've come up with is creating solicitation-free zones. And those are basically identified in areas where we have, it seems to be a problem. And what we would like to do is we have to tie these to some type of, how these areas with these types of ordinances preventing this type of activity in those areas would, you know, ultimately protect and serve the public and serve the general welfare. I think we had looked at a central business district, solicitation-free zone, East Marshall, and Loop 281 solicitation-free zone. Now, anytime, this is just a beginning process. And those things are fluid and they can change over time as we go through there. But within these zones, there would be no solicitation unless you had the permission of the property owner. So, if a property owner said, "Hey, I want to have the Girl Scouts or whoever" or wanted to let some people that were homeless solicit, he could let them do it on his property. But generally, within these zones, it would be restrictive that way. And then the other thing is that when we've noticed in other communities is dealing with aggressive solicitation. That's where somebody may be more, you know, they're more demanding and wanting something from an individual. And we felt that, try to tie up some definitions on that because that, nobody wants somebody, if you've told somebody no and they're on notice, to continue to bug you or continue to bug other people. And again, these are all tied to, you know, making sure that our businesses are safe, our people are safe in our community. And we would, there would be certain areas that would just be off limits such as outside bank, you know, a teller machine where somebody's getting their money, obviously. Outside banks, car washes, service stations, public transportation, and restaurants. We would prevent those, from that occurring in those areas. The last thing that we wanted to look at too was working on our existing ordinance. And I think it's been brought up here about camping. And this is kind of all interrelated with this. It's that, you know, the courts have consistently held you can't prohibit loitering or vagrancy. Those laws have been held unconstitutional. So, what we were, what we looked at is to tweak these. And this ordinance, I think, was written back in the forties. It needed to be looked at to provide, to make it more expansive and make it applicable to the situations that we're trying to deal with where it impedes movement of people in a park or something to where, there's some type of interference with a sporting event, people utilizing the park. And it seems that would be more in line that we would be able to be justified in defending something like this. And then the last thing that we've come up with, and this has really come, has come up with our discussions from hearing what the mayor said earlier today and then throughout the whole process, is that this measure should not be punitive. It should be a way to help people, to get them the help. And so, what we're looking at is within the punishment aspect, instead of doing a fine. instead of doing a fine, provide some type of diversion, that they, they're diverted to some type of program that's available, that, that's going to be developed within the community. And, and as, as a, Terry Jackson works in the community and a lot of homeless stuff. And he says, "Sometimes it doesn't take the first time, sometimes it doesn't take the second time." So we would probably have this diversion for a few times. If they don't wanna do it, that's fine. Then we could offer community services. If they don't wanna do that, then they can pay the fine if they want to. But generally, what we found out is that, you know, if, if somebody's homeless, they're gonna be indigent. And they're not, you can't, there's no purpose in, in that, you just can't do it that way. So we're looking at any type of punishment that may be tied to it to try to get them into a program or to some help. And if that doesn't work, you know, but if they don't wanna do that, again, they have free choice not to do that. They can choose their. Help and hope. We're trying to provide that. And like you say, Jim, that this, to put someone, to levy a fine on someone that's homeless is, it's spitting into the wind. There's no reason for it. It just, it just clogs up our court system. It clogs up our books. It's just, it's useless. And so why not make it into something that's useful instead of useless? And if we can help these individuals, and like I say, it may not happen the first time, but when they, when they gain our trust and they know that we're trying to help them and not hurt them, I think we can, we can make a positive impact. Because what other option do we have? Options are very limited in this, in this realm. And so we wanna try our best. But, and first and foremost, as you said, constitutionality has to be at the forefront. We, we're not gonna do anything that's unconstitutional for anyone in our community, not, not anyone. And so it's, it's a tough, it's a tough line. But, you know, I was reading yesterday online somewhere, I think it was Utah or Wyoming, I cannot remember where. But, and we've shown this in the task force, we went through so many studies. But, you know, giving money to people is the worst thing you can do. It's the worst thing you can do to try to solve homelessness. And this gentleman was arrested in Wyoming or somewhere, I can't remember where. But he was panhandling and he was arrested for intoxication. But they watched him for two hours. And in two hours, he collected two hundred and thirty-seven dollars panhandling. That's a hundred and seventeen, seven dollars an hour, you know? And so that, that breaks our system. When we allow things like that, it keeps people that who need, truly need the help from getting the help that they need, from the resources that we have available. We want to encourage our residents to give to the individuals and the entities that utilize these dollars to the one hundred percent utilization that they can do because they know what to do with this money. And then it helps everyone that wants help. And once again, we cannot help those that don't want help. But those that do want help, let's optimize the help that we can give to them by doing it the right way. And that's what we're trying to do here. Once again, we're not trying to punish anybody. We are out here trying to help the people that want help in our community. And those that don't want help, we can't, we can't do anything about that. I mean, maybe they will go someplace else. I don't know what they'll do. But we're gonna help everyone that wants help. That's the mission of this task force and the mission of our council and the mission of our community. It should be the mission of our country is to help those that want help. So there's where we are, Jim, and I appreciate your, this is, legal is obviously the hardest because it takes so much time and effort to research. But Jim, you guys have done a great job and I appreciate the time you put into this. It's not easy and I know that. And it's hard on you guys because it's, you know, we're talking about humans, you know, this is, this is difficult. So questions, Mr. Finley?
I have a question. I just wanna make sure I understand exactly what we're proposing. So one would be about zones where panhandling would not be permitted. So like downtown and the various other districts you talked about? Okay, so we would identify a district and say we couldn't do that there because it would be a safety concern. But then the aggressive stuff, and you talked about different areas that would impede.
That would be, that could be throughout.
Okay, so there would be two separate things. A district where permit, not permitted at all.
Right.
And then throughout the city, we would have some limitations on the way panhandling could be done.
Right.
Couldn't be aggressive, couldn't impede movement.
Aggressiveness or if it's like outside of a bank teller.
Couldn't be specific, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that makes sense to me. And then the only comments I would have, I was gonna ask you about punishment. I'm glad you're already thinking about that. Obviously, that's a sensitive area and we need to be, handle that appropriately. So I think that sounds like you already have that in mind. And then the other comment I had is, I've been on several of the Chambers inner-city trips and all of the successful downtowns that we would visit had that type of district there. And so there wasn't solicitation allowed in their downtown, which had helped allow it to flourish and more and more people to come there and live there and participate downtown. So I'm in support of both of the things that you've talked about. Just wanna make sure I understood exactly what we were discussing.
The aggressive, and I'm in support also, the aggressive solicitation area. When you named the different areas, did you name anything like grocery stores or?
That, that would just be in, in general, aggressive solicitation. That, that would be if somebody, generally, if you put them on notice, you know, that, hey, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be solicited and then continue, continue.
Because one of our most problem areas that we've dealt with through the years is Highway eighty. And so you have the Super One store there on eighty and the motels and so forth. And Chief and the police force have done a great job. But that would, and Walgreens, that's another, I hope I don't get in trouble for saying that. But they, they have panhandlers there like all the time. And their managers have reached out to me before. So if we can make sure that we encompass some of those retail areas as well, that would be really good. Thank you.
Oh, I got one more. So on location, you said two eighty-one, is that the Fourth Street? Is that where you're talking about? Because I think that's what we said, or what?
Yeah, the Longview Sam's, Fourth Street area.
I would, I would like that to be an area.
And we, and we can tweak, we just, we just threw areas out there. We can tweak that as a council. That's what I'm saying, these are discussion things that we will have to discuss as we go forward. But mainly, I just wanted to discuss them with you all to make sure we're not gonna go forward on something that we're not interested in. Because if you're not interested in it, then let's move on to something we are interested in. So if we're interested, we'll move forward and these discussions will continue towards implementation. And that's, that's the key to this. And, and I really appreciate you, Jim.
Yeah, we, you hope to use this as a tool, not as punishment.
Right.
I have one more question before you go. Have we looked at any other areas? Because I'm hearing downtown, I'm hearing Fourth Street. Have we looked at any other areas of town? And I'll say specifically like in my area, South Longview. Have we looked at some of those areas?
Every area of town.
Okay, because with the new, with the multimodal facility and the transfer center moving to that area, my concern is if we, if we put benches that divide downtown only, people are gonna go somewhere, the ones that we can't help. And so we don't want them to begin to congregate in areas where we have invested wholly in our community into making it what it is. So I'm, I'm asking that question for that purpose because we want that to also be an area that's not, you know, where you shouldn't be panhandling.
We'll be discussing every area of town, Cash. That's, every council person sitting here will identify areas in their district that need to be looked at. And that's the purpose of this, is to make sure we, we don't miss anything.
Perfect.
And we will. We will.
Thank you.
Mayor, without putting you or Jim on the spot, have you all talked about any kind of timeline for coming back to council with some sort of proposed ordinance amendments?
We, we have not talked about a timeline because we haven't had a chance to discuss it with, with the council and with the community. Because once again, these are things that are determined, gonna be determined by the council. There are seven other things that have to be determined by the community. You know, we, there are just a few things that'll affect us as a city council and our city budget, which we're discussing tonight. And now that, and as we can hear discussion, if we're in agreement to move forward, we shall move forward at a light speed, Ed. Because once again, as I said last two weeks ago, we didn't do this just for exercise. We did this to make this hap, make something happen. And I'm not a guy that just gets out there and talks, we're gonna have some action on this, one way or the other. We're either gonna agree to move forward or we're gonna agree to move on to something else. But we're gonna agree to something to get something going. And I appreciate your, your comments because we are gonna, if we're in agreement, then all full speed ahead.
That's rock and roll.
Okay. That's what I like to hear. Mr. Finley, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And council, that's all I really have for us tonight to discuss that, that impacts us, that we will have to take action on. The rest of this will, will be us and the community and the organizations that are involved. And so I want you all to feel free to discuss anything you want. We can talk, we can have discussion from the citizens if there's a discussion with citizens. This is open discussion for, on this item, so feel free.
Will we be, will we be meeting, you know, with the council? Will we have any type of special session as well, a more work session? Have you thought about that at all?
We will have to.
Okay.
Because there's a, even though these are three items, there's a lot on these plates. This isn't, this isn't as simple as three items. It's, it's a broad stroke that's gonna have to be brushed.
Good.
And it's gonna take some, it won't happen from one meeting to the next. It'll take a sit-down and deliberation with each one of you all, with each one of your districts involved. And that's gonna require some time.
Because I would like to see us have a council work session on this.
We shall. So are we in agreement, council? I like that. We're not taking a vote, we're just agreeing to move forward. So very well, we shall move forward. And I thank you, the citizens that have weighed in on this because your input is ultimately important as well. And I thank you for the lively discussion I've had this week. It's been very entertaining and very encouraging to me, but it's been educational to me because it's, it's always nice to see different viewpoints. They don't always agree with me or mine don't agree with them. But it spurs thought. And, and thought brings about change and change brings about results. So that's what we're looking for here. On to consent agenda. Any items council would like to move off for separate discussion?
Vote to grow.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Budget item. Mr. Willard, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget. Start that timer, Jim.
Three minutes?
That's it.
Or fi, it's five if you're on the agenda, right?
It depends on what you have to say about me.
Okay. Mayor and council, it's my pleasure tonight to present to you for your consideration of proposed budget for the City of Longview for fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. As we go forward from tonight, there will be plenty of opportunities for discussion and public input. The staff will be more than happy to answer any questions you might have to help you make informed decisions. The story of the proposed budget tonight really begins two years ago when in fiscal year twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, the City of Longview experienced significant reductions in our sales tax revenues as well as other operating revenues. In response, we trimmed approximately four million dollars in expenses from the budget. Those mid-year budget cuts, together with better-than-expected revenues, produced a very healthy general fund surplus. The large amount of savings coupled with our conservative fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen spending plan will result this year in an estimated year-end general fund surplus of twelve million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and forty dollars, or roughly twenty percent, nineteen point nine eight percent fund balance. The amount of savings the city has accumulated is really a testament to the management skills of our directors, managers, and supervisors. Despite sharp declines in operating revenue and reduced budgets, the employees of the City of Longview have worked extremely hard to provide the level of services our citizens expect. So the message of tonight's budget presentation is that the City of Longview is weathering the storm of a still recovering economy. But we remain financially strong. As such, I'm proposing a budget tonight that replaces some of the previous spending cuts, provides for an employee pay increase, and implements a new pay plan for our fire department employees that mirrors the twenty fifteen police department pay plan that was adopted. Proposed budget continues our implementation of priorities in the Longview Comprehensive Plan. The proposed twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget does not contain a tax rate increase. It does not increase rates for water and wastewater and does not increase sanitation rates. The proposal, this proposal does however include a modest use of surplus reserves to accomplish our desired goals. However, I believe we have sufficient funds available for savings, or from savings from previous years. The end result is a budget that provides the citizens of Longview the level and of services and public safety they are expected, that are expected. I want to take this opportunity to thank our directors, our department managers, and staff for their work during this budget process. I also want to recognize my budget team, and I'd like them to stand up when I call their name. These ladies and gentlemen have really helped me tremendously over the last several years that we've been assembled and they, they need special recognition. First of all, our assistant city manager Keith Bonds. Keith, stand up. Angela Cohen, our director of finance. Mary Ann Miller, our director of administration. Sean Hara, and he's got too many titles, I can't rate, tell them all in one sentence. And then our budget manager Angela Walker. Angela, would you stand? Let's thank, I wanna thank them. I really appreciate all their efforts, as well as all the directors and department heads. Before we get into the meat of the budget, I want to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan and what we've been able to accomplish over the last couple of years. The comprehensive plan was adopted in March of twenty fifteen. And we made a commitment as a staff and the city council and mayor to not let that document sit on the shelf and just get dusty. We wanted to accomplish what we could accomplish and to continue that effort each and every year. And, and I'm really proud of what we've been able to do so far, the things that we've done and those that we have in progress. And then we have some things in the future that we might talk about also. The comprehensive plan, you'll remember, came about and had about twenty-seven, I believe, different elements or priorities to the comprehensive plan that the citizens of this community would, wanted us to address as we go forward. And these are not in any sequential order. They're just, the numbers beside them is where they fell as a priority in, in the, but the comprehensive plan document. The first one I think we can check off is preparing a downtown master plan. Council approved and with the help of Longview Economic Development Corporation approved the downtown master, small area plans. And as you know, we have just completed that process and a presentation was made recently to the city council about that. And we'll have recommendations out of that document as we go forward for downtown. Number two, expand the trail system. And with the graciousness of the lead co-organization funding the trail system and the Aiken Trail System and our Guthrie Trail System, we're also in progress with an application to TechDOT for a trail grant that we feel very favorable about and have had some good communications about that. And I'm sure the mayor might have a comment or two later about, about that effort. So when we get through this, we'll have ten miles of continuous trail for our citizens. And of course, the trail system, as you can tell, was the number two priority item set by the citizens on this comprehensive plan. Number three, to demolish dilapidated buildings. Last year, in last year's budget, we increased our demolition budget, which is still very small on the scale of what we need to do. But we are committed to doing what we can as the budget allows to address the dilapidated buildings in our community. Special area plans for key corridors. Number six, this includes the I-20 small area plan as well as the downtown, but specifically the, the I-20 plan. That was presented as well by Freeze and Nichols. We're going to be coming to you shortly in the next few council meetings about the establishment of a TERS zone for I-20 area to try to capture some of the, the upswing and development that we hope will occur down there. But that will be for a future, a future time. Police-fire facility study. This is a study, as you know, we are completely out of space in our police department administration. And we are currently leasing space behind the police department for our detectives. And it's just way past time to address those conditions. And our police building has served us well, but it was built in the nineteen seventies. And it is very lacking in, in modern-day policing and things. And we really need to address that. That'll have to be addressed in a future bond election, more than likely, or other ways. And this study, we want to, and we have money, we're gonna ask you for to hire a firm to help us do a space in need study. Our police department, it would be easy to add a wing on, but we really don't really know if we, what we need. And so we think it'd be prudent to get that study done. And then we'll be ready when it's time to go to the citizens to ask them to support a bond issue. We'll know what we need to ask for. And so we're excited about, about that possibility. Design guidelines, the Unified Development Code, the UDC. Design guidelines, the Unified Development Code, the UDC. And we have executed a contract with Freeze and Nichols. They are helping us now develop the Unified Development Code. There are several things within the comprehensive plan that make that up. So we're excited to get that project underway. Increase our park budget. We have done that. We've made several moves over the last couple of years to increase our parks' budget and their funding. And Mr. Karen has a park replacement plan where he's going around strategically. And we have in the budget, you'll be seeing tonight, some money for park replacements out in Tig Park. And then the rest of these, we do not have any checkmarks by them. And that's due to the fact that these are the type of items in the comprehensive plan that are going to require a lot of funding. They're large capital projects that would require, in my opinion, a bond initiative to take to the voters to see their wishes on that. We have fire stations we need to build. We're out of space and aging, and we need to address that. The police-fire facility, we envision possibly a public safety administration area where fire and police are together at administrative wing. And some of that will come out of the study, and we'll get some recommendations for that. Implementation of road diets. This, these are things that are large public work street projects that need to be done. City hall expansion, we're spread all over town, as you know, and out of space here. And so those things and other things, as you can read. So as we go forward, I would urge the mayor and council to begin to develop a plan as to when the right time would be to go to the voters and ask them for a bond initiative. And that will be in the future sometime. But I think we're going to try to be ready from a staff side when you're ready, so we'll know what to ask for. Then I want to take a quick look at our 2011 street bond project. In 2011, the council issued and the voters approved a $52 million bond package to address our streets in the city of Longview. Some of them, as much as $52 million would buy us, and these were prioritized. And I just want to tell you that we have completed all of those projects and will complete, well, the final two, which is Center Street Project and then the Cotton Street Project. Those will anticipate to finish in spring of 2018. And I want to just give the council and the public to know, I think this is a real neat story to tell about the city staff, our Public Works Department, Roland McPhee and his people, under the leadership of Keith Bonds. To be able to design and build and plan and construct $52 million worth of projects on time. And Roland assures me that on the spring of 2018, we will have spent less than $52 million. So I think that's a real, you know, local government sometimes gets accused of not being able to be on time or on budget or things like that. And I know that city government works slow a lot of times. But we have real professionals here, and I think you all should be real proud of the job and the taxpayers that spent the taxpayers' money, the $52 million, to get these done. So I'm real proud about that, and we completed them. Just a couple of pictures. Here's our Center Street reconstruction. And then Cotton Street. And here's the High Street Underpass. And do you like the brickwork on that? I drive that every day, and it is amazing. I'd be offline in one course on that. But those fellows that worked on that, I don't know how they do it. It's amazing. But I think it's a great look. And this is part of the bond package, but the dip is no more. And that's through a grant that Judge Stout helped us to get and the net RMA and our city funds, we, Roland and his people, got that fixed. And it's really nice. Have you driven up there, anybody? Okay. And you have a tailpipe left, so that's good. All right, tonight's budget, just a few assumptions. We have, overall, we have a very strong financial position. And I think that's the message that I want to leave you tonight. Our sales tax, we're not back all the way. I believe it's stabilizing. And we're going to be projecting just a very slight increase in this next budget. Nothing to ride home about particularly, but just, I think, hopefully, we're turning the corner maybe a little bit. This budget contains a modest growth in our property values. We came in and, of course, part of our value is in Harrison County, the majority in Gregg County, and a net increase in our property values of just under 1% at about 0.82%. So just not much growth, not much movement, but we're thankful that it's positive. No property tax rate increase, no water rate increase for sanitation or water and sewer. Also, we are proposing a 3% across-the-board pay increase for our employees beginning April of 2018. This is a mid, what we would classify as a mid-year pay increase. Several reasons for this, budgetary primarily and financially. It breaks the increase to the budget by pay raises, breaks it up over two budget years, which helps us manage our cash flow a little bit better. We also have a proposal in here to implement a fire department pay plan as well in April of 2018. As you all know, under Mayor Mack's leadership and the rest of the council, we implemented the police pay plan in 2015. And it really mirrors the pay of the Tyler market, Tyler Police Pay. And we've done the same thing this year in the proposal that we would like to bring forth to get the fire department up to speed as well. And it would be equivalent to what the police department received there in April or in 2015. Another thing, we want to implement a 1% fire pension contribution increase. As you know, the firefighters are under a different pension system than the regular, the other employees. They have their own pension fund. The city is responsible for that. And several years ago, we started really a partnership with the fire department employees to make some corrections so that fund would be viable long-term for everybody to use. To do that, the city needed to make some contributions, and the fire department made some concessions as well on their side of it. They have done that, and we've done that. And I think the last reports have come out favorably. We still have a ways to go. But I think we're on the right trajectory for the fire department pension. But we would like to implement that beginning October 1. Make progress on the comprehensive plan. Utilize savings from general fund operations while still maintaining a large fund balance. Just quickly, I would like to review where we started this last year, the 2016-17. This is the budget that you approved last year. And you'll see that we had a balanced budget. We also had a prior year encumbrance that rolled forward. We amended our budget during the year of $149,500 to address the mold situation at Fire Station 5. So at the end of September, we're projecting a fund balance of $12,247,206, which is nearly 19% fund balance. We really think this is a conservative number, and I think our year-end estimate that we'll put up beside it will show you that. We're projecting an increase of 19.98%, nearly 20%. We think our budget is going to come in a little bit higher on the revenue side, and we're going to come in, we feel like, at a level of about $711,000 under budget by the time we get to September. So nearly a 20% fund balance. And the story tonight that we talked about earlier is the number down in the bottom hand. We have a 10% council policy minimum on our fund balance. And by the end of September, conservatively, we believe we'll have $6,325,000 above the 10% number that's unencumbered surplus fund balance, some savings that we've realized over the last couple of years. So I'm really proud of that. I think actually, we're going to come in better than that. And, but we're going to be at least $700,000 under budget on our expenditures. Quickly, this shows you our sales tax number. And it doesn't take long to look at this slide to see what's happened. You'll notice our 2017 projection at the end of this year, $19,764,524. And if you'll look back on 2009, our revenue collection was $19,437,931. So we've roughly collected this year the same level as we did in 2009, which I think just shows that we've made some progress, but we still haven't recovered to really where we need to be. But we're optimistic in the future. A lot of things going on in Longview, a lot of great ideas through the development and comprehensive plan and I-20 that this number's really going to, I think, start turning up. But we're projecting a little bit, a little bit more of an increase for 2018. Same thing on property values. This is our property tax revenue over time. And the red line at the top is just a trend line that shows that we are on a good trend. It's going up, but it's very slow and very deliberate. Average growth, annual growth since 2009 is 0.78%, just under 1%. But again, it's tracking on the right direction. And I think my takeaway on this slide is the importance of the Longview Economic Development Corporation. And if they can help bring in jobs and industry and growth to Longview, that curve's going to go up, and that's really what we want to see. This is our property tax rate, and I'm happy to announce that we've not raised the tax rate. This is the fourth straight year for that. The prior increases are only due to the 2011 tax bond issue that the voters approved. That began in '11 and '12. Our revenue summary, we are spending some one-time revenues in the general fund. These are savings. The first number, $1,546,708, is general fund savings from various CIP projects, namely, the George Ritchie Road. That was completed, and these are savings that the council had appropriated into that CIP fund. So we would like to utilize that. Also, savings from our General Obligation Debt Service Fund. Every year, we, part of, Sean, if you could go back to that previous slide. This shows it better. In the bottom land, we have two parts of the tax rate. The first one is our debt, our INS rate, and the next is the M&amp;O rate. Every year, part of the 50.99% goes into these two categories. One to pay our bonds, our debt, and the other for general operations. So over the last two or three years, with the good financial management that Ms. Cohen provides, we've had a surplus in that INS fund, and we'd like to transfer that and use some of that into the general fund. We have plenty of reserve left in there, in that debt service fund. Then also, our general liability and workers' comp savings. Those are funds as well that we've been able to have a surplus and a savings in, and we'd like to use $548,476 of that. Won't take much time here. These are the, our pie charts that show the areas where our revenue comes from in the general fund. Quickly, budget highlights. We're spending $750,000 back into our vehicle replacement fund. We don't want to get behind on those if we can help it. Our health fund contribution, we're proposing $145,000 into the fund balance of the health fund. Talk a little bit at the end about our health fund and some changes that we'll be looking for. The public safety space study that we talked about early, we'd like to allocate $100,000 for that study. And that may incorporate for the police department and look at some of the fire issues as well. And of course, we'll be bringing those back to you once, you know, we bring a contract for that, for your consideration, if you approve it, or let us go forward. Parks improvements, $123,000. The Arboretum Operations Study, Mr. Karen will probably talk to you a little bit more about that in his two items coming up after the budget presentation. This is money that we put in the budget for you to consider as operation studies. When the arboretum gets built, that is, will be a city park. And I think we need to understand and have an idea of who's going to be responsible for what regarding maintenance and operations, the arboretum group. What are they going to do? What's the city going to be responsible for? And make sure we have a good understanding going forward on how it's going to be operated and utilized. And this money, the $50,000, to clear up any confusion would not be, we would not go forward until the arboretum is, has the money raised and they're beginning construction in that way. Because this study's for future operations and how we would do that going forward. Also, we have put in this budget two new positions at Development Services. I believe a fire plans examiner and a plans examiner to help us with the load in our Development Services Department. We're currently behind on some of the projects due to just the volume and the requirements that we have. So, and then just for your illustration, the half-year for the fire pay plan will cost us $365,728. And for the other employees, the 3% would be $586,391. Our expenditures. And so for the 2017-2018 general fund budget, we're expecting to have that beginning balance to spend $65,022,864. I mean, is for revenues and expenditures, $65,601,740. So that means that we're asking for you to allow us to spend general fund balance to, out of savings, to close that to the tune of $578,876. And I think I can stand here and recommend to you that with an 18.87% fund balance at the end of next year, that's nearly $6 million at the end of 2018 that'll be above the 10% requirement. And I think it would be very prudent to spend that and to use nearly $600,000 in that way. And I think we shouldn't have any problems at all, and it's a very, I think, robust ending fund balance. So our total budget with Water and Sewer Fund, enterprise funds, and all the others totals $161,201,638. I might just say before I go into the meeting, on the general fund budget, we, we are increasing our expenditures. Obviously, we're putting some new things in there. But the increase in the expenditure for the general fund is 1.4% from last year's budget. So I think, although it is a modest increase from last year's general fund, I think with what we're trying to put in there and things we're trying to accomplish, it's a reasonable request. I'd be happy to take any questions. I do, before we take questions, this is the calendar that you have for the rest of the year or upcoming for the budget. These meetings, most of them are set by statute because of the way we have the process we have to go through to amend our budget. Finally, we'll adopt the budget on Thursday, August the 31st. The tax rate will be adopted September the 14th. CIP presentation the 28th and adopt the lead co-budget the 28th as well. So as always, if you want to have information for you to, for the next meeting, or if you want a special meeting, or if any of you individually, Mr. Finley, individually, if you want to come in, be happy to sit down with you and go over anything you'd like to go over and take as deep a dive as you would like. So I'll take any questions. So I'll take any questions if you have any. That's my presentation.
Mr. Willard, you've done another fantastic job at budgeting for our city, and I'm, it just, it's, it's, it's really amazing. In this economy where we are, what we've done and what you all have done and staff have done, it's just, it it requires an applause, and I'm just, I'm just going to say thank you. There's nothing easy about budgeting in this economy, and the way you have done it for the last three years that I've been involved has been remarkable. And I just want to say, I've never been, and I've told you this from the start, I've never been a huge fan of taking from our fund balance, because I think that's where we need to always keep our our money. But the way city staff has saved and scratched and clawed in this economy, and we've got this fund balance, it's really special that we're able to use it. And, you know, two years ago, we used our fund balance to fund the police officers because they, we were in a dire situation where we had fallen so far behind that it was showing in every aspect of our community. And we had to, we had to right that ship in a hurry, and we did, and we used fund balance to a level that we were a little bit uncomfortable. We used it, and it certainly paid its dividends. And now I'm more than happy to say, I'm happy to use fund balance again to do the same thing for our fire department, because they have been patient. I told them when I was elected, I will take care of you, just give me some time. We don't have the money now, and the fire department, the firemen, chief steelman, your crew has been so patient and so kind to sit and give us this chance, that it's our pleasure to be able to give you what you all so much deserved even two years ago. But we will always make it right for you guys, because you're always there for us, and I appreciate your patience, and we will do what we can to always keep our public safety at the top of the list, because that is the primary goal of government, is public safety. And so I have no reservations whatsoever doing this exact same thing we did for the fire department that we did for the police department. And I just thank you for your patience and your service to our community, because without you, we would not be a community that we are. So I think we've done a great job there. I think it's very prudent that we get back to our vehicle replacement, because we had to cut that last year because we were so short on income. But it's nice to be able to get that back in, because that's a place we don't want to have to be behind in. Vehicle replacement is an expensive avenue, and we must take that seriously, and I think you've done a great job there. Everything you've done has gone with a lot of thought, a lot of vision, and a lot of forethought, because we know, we realize that a lot of these numbers are half-year numbers, and next year, we'll have to come back and fund the full year. But we will do that. We will find those those dollars as well, because that's what this community will do, and that's what our staff does. And I, and I'm so glad we're able to have a pay raise for the staff, because we, I say it every time I'm up here, we have the best city staff anywhere, ever. And and you, and people deserve to be paid for what they're doing, and I think it's great that we're able to do that. So when we can, it's it's nice to be able to give raises where it's so deserved and so, so needed. And so David, your your budget is thorough, it's concise, it's conservative, it hits the areas that we need to hit, and it takes into account what our future hopefully will hold for us. And I like your conservatism, because maybe we'll have a boom next year, but we can't bank on that. I'd much rather have a surplus than a deficit. So thank you for that. And for everyone involved in this budget, it's been a, it's been a real pleasure, once again, to be involved in this budget process of the city, the city of Longview.
Thank you.
Counsel?
Great job, Mr. Willard. I am so impressed. 20 percent fund balance. I'm just going to go ahead and speak it into existence. That's great. But you know I have some questions for you.
Sure.
The $100,000 for the public safety space study, is that going to also include the general space study? Because we know we're, we're running out of space at City Hall. We're spread out all over the place. Is that all inclusive, or is that just one thing we're looking at?
That's a very good question, and yes and no. I think there's, it's amazing, there are firms, consulting firms, that that just focus on public safety, that are experts in fire and police. You know, and the police department, it's very specialized. You've got property rooms, you've got evidence rooms, you've got security, you've got, if you're going to have holding areas, there's, it's, it's really a specialized area, and many firms are specialized. And we thought that, and so a firm that would do public safety may not be as well-versed in just general government-type facility work. We wanted to start with, in this, in this contract that we're negotiating, will be negotiated and bring back, probably just to do the police and fire, the police department administration area that's located over here first. And we can amend the RFP as we go forward, and if, I think there's seven or eight firms that have responded to the RFP that we're going to be going, going with. And perhaps some of those in the negotiation, we can get them, maybe they're big enough and they do general government-type space studies as well. But we're, we're looking at that, and we know, for instance, Parks Operations Administration Building, we know that's on the comprehensive plan, and and we need, need some help there too. So and and City Hall as well. So as much as we can incorporate for that amount of money, we're, we're going to try to do that. And and then if, to be ready to go forward in the next bond initiative.
Well, they'd be making recommendations, because I know we can't just add on a wing over at the police the way the detectives are squished in. But are they going to make recommendations as to how we utilize our space in our community? Like, if we have a building, that may be something we can acquire? Okay?
Right. For instance, you know, it may turn out that the police department facility and municipal courts, it might be that that police and need to build a new administration bill, a new police station.
Right.
Administrative building somewhere around this campus. And then that would free up theirs, and we could repurpose that space for, for other city departments that are spread out. There's, there's just a lot of different variables and possibilities, and and that's why we really need some expert help, because we want to get it right. If we're going to go to the public and spend that kind of money to build something new or refurbish, repurpose that, we, we need to know what we're doing. And Keith Bonds and Ronald McPhee are good Aggie engineers, but we...
We need some more help.
I think we need a little bit more.
He's just oxymoron.
Well, I know, you know.
Sorry, all my kids went there. I'm just kidding. Great school.
I am too. I got to work with them, so I...
Thank you for that clarification. And my last request, and we can speak about it later, I would like some justification for the two new positions in Development Services.
Okay.
And the reason I ask that is because I know we have other departments in the city that we've lost positions in, and we've not replaced them, and we've lost people due to attrition and so forth. So I really would like to have a better understanding of why we are giving two new positions to Development Services, because we're fully staffed, to my understanding, pretty much over there. Now, I know they're doing more, but the leadership has changed too, as far as like, you know, we have the director, and then there's, there's been some movement. So I'd like a little bit more information about that.
Sure, be happy to. One of the, just quickly, one of the, the issues is when we made the change and, where the Fire Marshal's Office went, or Development Services took over the Fire Marshal's duties as far as the development side of it. We lost the, the Fire Plans Examiner, I believe I'm correct in that, when we made that transition. So they really are short a person after that transition. And then I think the, the other, the Plans Examiner, we just have a real backlog of plans. And Mr. Shirley is on vacation this week, and I'm sure he and Ingrid can sit down with him, and Keith and I'll be happy.
And I can, I can tell you, as of right now as well, Kasia, Development Services is booming, Longview is booming right now, and we don't have enough people to service the requests that we have. And the worst thing, it's like having a restaurant and not having enough food, you know? Only way you're going to grow is to get people in and out of Development Services. And so we need to get people in and out of Development Services as quickly as we can, so that they can get their projects going, so that we can get tax revenues, or we can get employees, and we can get people happy. And so I've seen it. I know Steve has been down there multiple times, Mark is here in the room. Mark has worked hours beyond hours to try to get inspections done and plans done, and the things that we, we're just, we're just bogged down. And of all the places, that's the greatest place in the world to need new employees, because that means we, we are having things to do that we can't service. And so we will get, let's, let's discuss that, but just to let you know, that's, that's one of the best problems to have, is to need more people in Development Services.
Yeah, and I'm aware that that Longview's booming. But I, in all fairness, I have to be forthright enough to inquire about it.
Sure.
Because I'm also aware, there are some deficiencies, or some areas that may need a little extra help, and we've not hired. So let's just take a look at that later.
We'll be happy to sit down anytime you have time.
Absolutely. Love to. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Next?
I just have one question.
Yes, sir. On the 1 percent fire pension, is that something, is that going to be an annual thing, or is that a one-time thing this year? No, it, it's annually. Okay. It will, it'll be a reoccurring annual payment into the, currently it's 17 percent. Is that right?
I think so. Yeah, it's 16.
And it'll go to...
17, yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And so it'll go to 18 percent, but that'll be, be from now on. And of course, the fire department employees match that as well. Are they at 18 percent or something?
17.
So, so 18 percent match from the fire department employees out of their paycheck goes into the fund as well. So the city's matching, matching their contribution. I don't think, they don't pay social security, they pay into their pension system. And so we're matching now 18 percent, 18, and they're putting in 18 percent. And and they've made some concessions the last couple of years on some of their benefits to try to bend the curve. Such a couple of things, just off the top of my head, they've changed for the future department employees, the dates of retirement, the age. And so all those things and these contributions make the future long-term liabilities come down, which is, we, we want a healthy fund for them and for us as well. So we, we think this is a prudent move.
I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
I just, I think, and you've all said this, but I think it's just incredibly amazing that over the last couple of years, you managed to save money, and I think that just speaks to what a great management team we have. I am very excited to see that we were able to fit in a 3 percent raise for all of staff, and also the fire pension and the fire increase. For years, we've all been saying, we know it's needed, we just don't have the money. And I think it's so important that, for those that sacrifice for us every day, that we show that same commitment to them. So I am very pleased that we were able to fit that in. Also, just on the pension issue, that's something that's been going on for years, and I really appreciate your commitment to seeing that through as well. That's been something that the firefighters have taken very seriously in figuring out how to address it on their end, and they've taken steps, and we agree to take steps with them. So it's good that we've seen that through as well, and I'm proud of us for doing that. And finally, I am very pleased that we're continuing to support the comprehensive plan. Thank you, Mayor Mack, for continuing to support that, and everybody up here and city staff for continuing to figure out how we can plug that in and keep at it. We truly have not put that on the shelf and forgotten about it, and our committee will continue to move forward with that. I do, and I know you know this as well, but for staff raises, I think it's, it's an easy one to cut, that we've cut in the past, but I'd love to see us try as much as possible to do that every year, where we have some sort of cost of living raise for staff, so we don't fall behind and have to do big jumps like we've been doing. I know we've talked about that in smaller meetings, but I think that's great that we've been able to do it this year.
Well, and to your point, I'm glad you mentioned that. I wanted to emphasize that, I meant to earlier. But we, you know, we've, we've taken care of the police department, and now this year, the fire department, to get them up to where, where they need to be. And the 3 percent raise is, is wonderful, and it will really help our employees. But we, we have many employees all throughout that, that we need to, to look at, at the market rate for those employees, just like we have the fire and just like we have the police. They, that's not been looked at. So I would, would hope in the future that the next time we can take and really do a, instead of, and the, don't get me wrong, the cost of living's wonderful, and I thank you for that on their behalf, but we really need to look next for the general government employees like we have these others. But, so I appreciate your saying that.
As you know, I'm, I'm not a big fan of cutting into the, the fund balance, especially for operating costs, but echo the mayor's comments, given the, the healthy financial statements we have and the fund balance that you and your staff have been able to build up. I'm not at all uncomfortable with dipping into it to the tune of 578,000. But, you know, that's one of the first things I look at, so you're, you're to be commended. This is, this is good.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Willard, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Round of action items. Consider resolution accepting donation of 25,000 from Bob and Dorothy Metzer to the contract for the consultant for the Longview Arboretum and Nature Center. Mr. Karen?
Good evening. If you don't mind, I'm going to cover the next two items in one presentation, because I think it makes sense for us to be able to talk about both those items as, as one. And so the first thing, first thing I want to do is to give a little background to ensure that everybody understands how we got to where we are today and what we're looking forward to down the line. So the idea of the arboretum has been discussed for over 15 years. Lady Bird Johnson Wildflower Center completed a master plan in 2013, and it included a conceptual design feasibility as well as project phasing. And in that, the main emphasis was on the feasibility of being able to provide that. It didn't, it did go a little bit into what the operational revenue expenses were, but not to the great detail that we feel that we need to have at this point. So a board was formed in 2015 to make the arboretum a reality. They hired an architect to design and develop a probable cost of construction. They formed committees to market and promote the arboretum, as well as begin raising funds. And so what they came up with, and it's a little bit hard to see, because it's really supposed to be turned the other way, but essentially, what you see on the left, upper-left corner is Mod Cobb, and then on the, the right side is Cotton Street. And so it, I just wanted to give you an idea of, this is the master plan that was developed by the architect through the committee, and, and this was approved by the arboretum board to, to move forward. So next, along the way, the city was awarded, we applied for and received a grant with Texas, or sorry, for Texas Parks and Wildlife for $250,000, a $50,000 match from the city of Longview. And we're still waiting on that grant agreement, but we should get that now, over the next couple of weeks. We, we've received an email about that over about a month ago, and should be here any day now. So the grant will fund the trails, a portion of the trails, not all of the trails, but a portion of the trails on the, the section that is closest to Mod Cobb. Next, along the way, this past January, the city and the board, the Arboretum Board, entered into a memorandum of understanding. This MOU defined the scope, the estimated cost, the funding requirements, as well as the need for an operating agreement once the facility was opened. After that occurred, shortly after January, the property on Cotton Street became available. So you can see it up on the top right corner there. And the arboretum discussed and actually ended up purchasing the property on Cotton Street. And so with this purchase, as well as development of the entire site, the scope really changed, and the complexity of the entire arboretum changed. So when all of that occurred, we, we felt that it was important for us to engage an RFP, to look at hiring a consultant, to see where we're going to be able to go with this in the plan, in the, in the future. Because the, the plan that was developed in 2013 really didn't discuss all of these different items. They, they did talk about it a little bit, but we wanted to make sure that moving forward, that we would know the obligations that the city of Longview would have, as well as what the obligations that, that a separate board would have. And one of the reasons why we feel it's important to be able to do that now, rather than wait until the arboretum has all the funding in place to be able to do that, is we don't want to get into a situation where the arboretum raises all the money that is necessary to build this facility, and then they say, all right, here it is. We come back and find out that the city has to contribute $100,000, $150,000, $200,000, whatever it is annually, and now we say, hey, we can't do that. And so that's why we feel it's important to say, or to figure out, okay, if we build this plan, we build to this, what are our operational costs going to be overall? And how do we split that up between the arboretum board and the city of Longview? So that's why we felt it's important to do that now, rather than wait until they raise all the money. I don't think either, any of us want to get into a situation where people have contributed dollars, or they get out there and start talking about things, and then we say, you know what? I know you guys did a great job raising the money, but we just can't do our part. So that's why it's, we feel it's important to do. So that's why we feel it's important to do that at this time. So the design for that corner, that will make this the main entrance to the arboretum off Cotton Street. And again, I know this is a relatively crude drawing, but it just kind of gives you the sense that now this circle to the, on the left-hand side will actually be the main entry point to the arboretum rather than entering from the main point that was once on Maud Cobb. So city and the arboretum board reviewed and interviewed and selected ETM to perform the tasks that we've listed here. And again, we want to make sure that everybody has a clear understanding of their roles and responsibilities as well as their costs moving forward within this project. The timing and the funding of it is very crucial and the board has continued to work to raise funds and they would like to get started, obviously, today. We know and understand that the way that the city budget works, we don't have funding in place to do the strategic plan right now. And that's why we're proposing to have the city's portion begin October 1. And it's also why Bob and Dorothy Metzler have offered to provide the $25,000 right now to get that project started so that we can get that going. And we feel that that funding will be able to allow us to roll seamlessly into October 1 when all of the other parts of the plan need to be looked at and completed. So there are two resolutions before you tonight. The first is accepting the donation from the Metzlers and then the second one would be to authorize city manager to negotiate and finalize the contract. And again, I wanted to present one presentation. That way you guys can discuss it as a whole because again, I'd hate to put you in a bad position. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Any questions? Mr. Karen?
I have a comment. I think I'm the unofficial liaison to the arboretum board. So I just wanted to add that the volunteer committee members that have been working on the arboretum have raised $1.2 million to invest in our city park, which is a high comprehensive plan need. We need people to be attracted to Longview so we can increase our sales tax base. We also need additional park space. So this meets a lot of those comprehensive plan needs and we have a number of committee members and community members that have invested a lot of time and money up and chew this point. From a council perspective, I agree with Scott that it's very important that we have lined out who's doing what so that we as a city don't get into a situation where we've bitten off more than we can chew. And so I think this is an essential study and a important time for us to start with it. So I'm really appreciative to the Metzlers for stepping up and contributing that so we can get started. But I think it's also our role to protect ourselves moving forward that we also commit to paying for the additional part of the study. So I am in favor of committing those funds.
Anyone else? Mr. Wright?
Mr. Karen, first, I agree with Mrs. Shahara. I sure appreciate what the Metzlers have done and all the people have done that have worked on this. This is a, arboretums are a great thing. I like going to the Dallas Arboretum and seeing that. But my concern, we have an MOU already, is that correct? And in that, we're responsible for maintaining the trails and I think maintaining the meadow.
At this time, because it's undeveloped and once the site does become developed, the MOU states that we will negotiate or figure out an operating agreement between them as to who does what. So it does spell that out.
Okay, so, but they're going to be responsible for all the gardens and all that kind of thing down the road? Or are we talking about us being responsible for that?
Well, that's, the way that we've discussed this in the past is essentially the Parks and Recreation Department, beautification, the city is really good at mowing grass. We're hiring contractors to do that and cleaning. We do those things really well and we take care of our facilities very well in that regard. And arboretum is a much different deal. The formal gardens are, need constant care and attention. That's not something that we currently have our staff to do, number one, but then also design and implement new beds and to change those out. That's not something we are able to do at this current time. And so the conversations all along have been, look, the city does a good job of what we do and we're probably going to be able to do those kind of things. We need to know what those costs are. But the arboretum is going to have to foot the bill for all of the other items, which are the formal gardens and those kinds of things. And again, part of what we're going to ask the consultant to do is take a look at the plan that is pretty close to being able to, ready to go out to contract is, okay, so what would you anticipate the annual cost being? Where's the revenue generation going to be able to be so that some of that, those costs can be offset? And then who's responsible for all of that?
Well, you know, I look at the budget for next year and we talked about the homeless task force and we need $130,000 for two officers. We need, you're getting $123,000 to work on the parks. If you had another $50,000 to work on the parks, you could do a lot of other things with that. Sometimes I think we get carried away with consultants and I don't think we need a consultant to tell us how much it's going to cost to mow the trails and to maintain the meadow. And I think we just have a lot of other places we could spend this money. I think, I don't want to put the chiefs on the spot, but I'm sure they'd love to have $50,000 more in their budget to buy equipment with. So I think there's other places we could spend that money.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me begin by saying, I love the arboretum. I've been in support of it from John, but I'm struggling with the, with item B not to exceed $75,000. That's where my struggle comes in. Aren't we already committed? Because it's going to be a city park ultimately, except for maybe the garden aspect. But tell me a little bit more about why we need to pay a consultant to, what are we dividing up? I'm not getting that. Because I agree with Mr. Wright on that aspect. We know what we're going to have to maintain and I think that was a part of the initial commitment, right?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So we're going to have to pay for it anyway. I mean, I'm just saying. So tell me again, what duties are we really dividing and why is it going to cost so much? And I'm very appreciative of the Metzlers' contribution, of course. But then the line item B says not to exceed $75,000 when $50,000 was on the slide in the budget. So explain that to me a little bit, too.
Right, so the total cost is approximately $75,000 or not to exceed $75,000. $25,000 that is a contribution from the Metzlers. So the city's portion would be $50,000.
Okay.
As far as our, you know, being able to move into this and operate this facility, you're correct in that we have committed, I guess the city council and city is committed to being able to do this. And we can certainly try to come up with what our costs are going to be. I think the real challenge for us is negotiating that contractor or that operating agreement with the arboretum board and making sure that there are no hurt feelings on either side. If they draw it up, certainly they're going to want to have much less contribution to it than what we would like. And we want to have a healthy relationship with the board moving forward. And I think that's one of the main reasons why you do get a third party involved is to be able to ensure that somebody is looking out for the best interests of everybody. Certainly, they understand and appreciate that we want to look out for the best interest of all citizens of Longview and anybody coming into it. And I guess that's my concern moving forward is, I want us to fully understand and make sure that they fully understand that they have to have annual contributions coming forward to the tune of what amount, we don't know. And so if the study says that, look, this plan says, you're going to, the arboretum board is going to have to come up with the $200,000 every year. If the arboretum board doesn't feel that they can do that, then we may need to go back to this plan and say, alright, we need to change our plan to be able to accommodate what we feel moves forward. So does that, I mean, it kind of goes hand in hand. If the consultant comes back and says, you're going to have to foot the bill for $300,000. You guys ready to do that? And we as a city say, we don't have that kind of money and they don't feel, based on the fundraising that they've already done, they're going to have to do that and look at the programs and everything. And so we just want to take that comprehensive look. And again, I appreciate everything and we could do that. It's going to take longer than what a consultant would. And again, my concern, one of my concerns is I want us to have a healthy relationship with the community overall, specifically with an entity that's interested in bringing a wonderful asset to our community.
Thank you. That explains it. Got it.
So the scope of this study is a lot wider than who's going to mow what and who's going to water what plants.
Yes, sir.
With respect to the building they just purchased, I assume this study will also talk about who's going to be able to occupy what and how much it's going to cost them. There may be some city arboretum opportunities for sharing that I assume this study would at least look at.
Right, I'm sorry for speaking over you, but that's not part of the scope of this at that time because it's actually on private property. The building and the property is private property. So at this time, the city doesn't have any rights or responsibilities as far as the building is concerned. And so, you know, that's certainly the whole overall aspect. If the city is in control of that, we'll have to take a look at that. But again, it's, the scope of work at this time does not include specifically looking at the, at the building itself.
Does the MOU have a deadline for the arboretum to be under construction or have a contract executed for construction?
Yes, sir. And so the MOU was by October 1. But also within the MOU was two other things that, because of the scope has changed, the MOU stated that if the scope or the program changed, city needed to approve that. And again, we typically have done that through Mr. Willard and then also the cost. And again, based on everything that has occurred, the scope as well as the cost has increased. And then also as part of that, we would do an amendment to extend that, the existing MOU. And so at last, at the, at last month's arboretum board meeting, we did present that to the arboretum board. Mr. Willard has reviewed that and so we extend out that date as well as the requirement. Because again, we don't want to put the city in a poor position as far as funding the construction either. And so again, it was time for us to let them know that they required to have all of the funding upfront. And they kind of knew that, but I think last month was the first time they truly realized that, alright, we got to get all of this money in hand before the city is going to get underway with this because we don't have the capacity to be able to carry that in the interim. So again, we're doing all this as diligently as we possibly can to protect all interest involved.
Mr. Karen, and I like the way you say, we don't want to get upside down in the city. Let me restate that. We cannot get upside down in the city. We do not have those resources. And, you know, this is one of those things that I would love to see occur in our community. It's a, it would be a great thing for the community, for people to come in and out, to see what we do and see what we have and the beautifications and all the things, bring in dollars, revenues, all those things. Kind of like the amphitheater we talked about. It would be the same thing. We'd love to have people come in and out. But as I stated in the amphitheater discussion, the city cannot participate in another cash negative event. We don't have that ability. We've got too many on our plate right now with Maud Cobb, the animal shelter. We are, we take, that's two and a half million dollars we spend every year to maintain those facilities and that's a big chunk of our budget. And so we need to be very assured that the city will not have the liability with that. And my question is, the total cost of the arboretum is how much?
If you include everything, so again, that would be the purchase of the property, the interior renovations as well as outside, it's approximately $3.7 million.
Okay, we've raised 1.1?
Two, yeah.
Two, 1.2, which is great. I mean, that's fantastic. My question is, do we have to come up with this money now or can we not wait until the money is raised to proceed? Because we can't proceed forward if we don't have the full money, can we? I mean, maybe I'm missing, maybe I'm missing something here.
Right, no, I understand.
Because I can tell you this, no one's going to build the amphitheater until they've raised 19-something million dollars. You know, they don't raise $19 million, then I mean amphitheater builds as far as I'm concerned. And so my question is, the timing on this, you say we need to get started now? I mean, explain why now? Why do we have to start now? Why can't we start when we have, I mean, I don't mean when all the money's available. I'm saying if we're a third of the way there, we have two-thirds of the way to go. Right? So I'm concerned about our commitment on this. But whatever we do, we have to make sure that the city knows our responsibilities and the arboretum knows their responsibilities. And that has to be clearly defined with no gray. There cannot be gray. Because if the arboretum is built, as with any facility, is built and then the obligations cannot be met, it falls back on the city and we don't have the resources, then it becomes a disaster. And we can't have that. And I don't think that's ever going to happen because I guess it's going to be something that we'll all be proud of and thrilled to have and all that. But I'm just curious about the timing right now, why we're going to this effort at this point when we don't have the money available? Because now, if the arboretum wants to do the study for the arboretum's own concerns about what they're getting into, then I say let the arboretum go forward. And I, and the Metzlers, my gosh, what a generous offer that they've produced for us. What great civic people they are. But you know, when the, when the, when LEEDCO did their study on the amphitheater, we did not spend a dime on the amphitheater facility study, did we?
Not to my knowledge.
I did, we didn't. And so, I mean, that was LEEDCO's doing that. And so my question is, why are we, I'm just, I'm asking why?
Sure. I think to me, the main difference is the amphitheater is, has potential and is a potential venue whereas the arboretum is a realistic or a reality as far as it's been on the comprehensive plan as well as been approved as through ordinances as parkland and is a known project that has been worked on to at least a certain degree. I guess that would be the, it's not a new project.
No, I get that. It's a reality. But the magnitude of the reality is still up in the air. I mean, the magnitude of the reality is not going to be reality unless they raise 3-point-something million dollars.
Right.
Am I right or wrong?
Well, I think what will ultimately happen is that number would get scaled back. I mean, I think the point is they are ready to move forward and so if that means cutting out some of that overall top number dollar, they're going to do it to get where we need to go. The original MOU had us starting construction like now. And then through the purchase of that building, that got all kind of mixed up a little bit, but it was a great opportunity. So I think that will get changed so that they're ready to move forward immediately. I mean, I think whatever number they end up with fundraising, if it's 1.2, we'll go ahead and build with 1.2 now.
I see. So they will start construction before they have the full amount of the money to do the entire project?
It was initially done in phases and that was the, that was the plan.
Okay, so you could do, say, phase one with a million, two?
Yes.
And if you never got to phase two or phase three, it wouldn't look incomplete?
Correct.
It's designed so that you can do this in phases? Well, that's brilliant. I mean, see, I don't know anything about this stuff. That's brilliant. That's what we need to be looking into. And so I can live with that. I just can't live with us being overextended. I mean, I would love to be able to be overextended as a city, but we do not have that luxury. And so we have to protect that. So if we can proceed in that fashion, then I have no issues with that. I just don't want us to be left, it would be, it would be like when we built Lear Park. If Lear Park couldn't sustain itself, we don't have the ability to sustain Lear Park. It has to sustain itself. And so, and it has, and that's what we want to see happen here. But we didn't build Lear Park till we had $12 million in our hand to build Lear Park. So if we can do this in phases, then I can certainly see the benefit of that. But I just want to make sure we're not getting the cart for the horse from the city's standpoint. Arboretum board can do what they desire to do. They have their own money and their own board. And I applaud them for fundraising and the projects they have, the vision they have is fantastic. And I hope it all comes together and I think it will. So as long as we protect, we're protecting, our job is to protect the taxpayers of this community from getting into a hole. That's what we have to be always ever mindful of, so.
And I agree with that, Mayor, 100%. And I think that's what the study would help us be able to do upfront before we agree to any, anything on the city's behalf. And I know that we've been paying for a lot of studies and that people are very sensitive about that. But I do really feel like this is important. And one thing that we haven't talked about is that this study would help us figure out how to hit the ground running, give us the best chance at making the most revenue that we can just in how we're going to operate it, what we're going to sell there, all those kinds of things that I'm, you know, I'm not qualified to make. And the scope of the arboretum is so much more than anything we currently have or anything that exists in East Texas, that I think we really could benefit from someone saying, here's how you can maximize this. And we've been so fortunate to be able to do that with Lear Park and make that such a success. I think this would give us a real shot to take the arboretum to that same, same level.
I agree. I agree with that. I just, I just want to make sure we are not, because how long have we been working the arboretum? I just, I don't remember that. I just, I don't remember that. You said, you gave a timeline.
Yeah, the, I mean, the, the Arboretum Board was formed in 2015. So it's been a little over two years and their design came about, really, that you saw on the screen earlier, was December, really, that's kinda when that was approved, by the, December of 2015, and then it's just-
So it's only been fundraising a couple of years then?
Correct.
Hey, we could raise a couple million dollars every two years. I think that's a very positive outlook.
Yeah.
So, very well. Any other discussion?
Why are we funding $50,000 if they've got their own, they've got 1.2 million? Why are we funding this?
I can't answer that question.
My answer would be that it is, the primary goal of the study is to protect the city.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it is a park that the city will operate. And so it was all, I mean, it was a city idea to have those things put together so that we could all sign those things. And it was not something the arboretum set, or the arboretum board brought to us and said, we need to do this. It was as a group, we said, this needs to get lined out. And I, I personally feel like it is essential for us as a city to have, to protect what we need to do moving forward. So.
Did we use consultants for Lear Park? When we built Lear Park?
Keith is saying yes. I have no idea.
Did we use consultants for the dog?
Oh, yeah.
For the animal shelter?
Yes.
And how did that turn out? I wasn't here to-
I, I wasn't either. I don't know.
Did that turn out, Mr. Willard?
Well, it's a beautiful facility.
Oh, I don't, that's not what I'm talking about. Talking about the financial end of it.
You are something.
And I agree, it's a beautiful facility. It really is. So I, I can certainly see the issue, but it, and, and Mr. Karen, I'm gonna lay this squarely on your shoulders.
Yes, sir.
If this study is what we need to do to protect the city, then I am 100% in favor of it. If this study is not to help protect the city, then I don't see why we are paying for it. And if you say it is, then I'm gonna go with what you say because that's why we hire you to be our Parks Director.
Yes, sir. No, I firmly believe that, that this is something that we need to get into. And again, I don't wanna commit future funding for operations that could be used somewhere else without knowing what that potential is. And if we don't know what that potential cost is, then I, I'm very uneasy with saying, with saying to the Arboretum Board, go ahead and build it, we'll take care of it once you do.
Okay.
I, I'm very uncomfortable with that.
Very well.
And so I, I believe that a consultant will help us determine what our costs are gonna be and, and what the requirements of the Arboretum Board are gonna be. And if, if the two of us can't say, we can't do that, then I, I think that allows either us to reevaluate our position moving forward, whether we should pursue a $3.7 million facility, a $2.5 million facility, or a $1.2 million facility. At what level are we comfortable with funding the operations of? And if that's $25,000 a year, or $50,000 a year, or $100,000, or $200,000, I think all of us need to know and understand what that cost is.
Very well. Thank you, Mr. Karen. That was a long discussion. I appreciate your honesty. Is there a motion on Act item A to consider a resolution for $25,000 donation that we wanna accept from the Metzlers?
Lou Duffer, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If y'all would've voted against that, I'd have had to fit. Is there a motion on Act item B to execute the contract not in exceeding $75,000 for a strategic, strategic plan for Longview Arboretum?
Lou Duffer, second.
You mean, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. We are now to items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
The historical marker workshop last month was such a success. Donuts were involved, as I recall, that we're gonna do it again. August 26, 10:00 AM, Development Services Building, to talk about how to get a historical marker, what kinda research is necessary. And they had a good turnout last month, and I assume donuts will be available again. Second, my town hall meeting on August the 7th. I have invited Catherine Neely, the Gregg County Elections Administrator, to come and spend a few minutes talking about countywide polling for our next election, just to, to bring it a wider distribution, people being aware that we're gonna be able to do that. Then secondly, I wanna talk about the budget that Mr. Willard presented to us today and try to get as much input as I can from, from our residents. So I would encourage everybody to come Monday, August 7th, 7:00 PM, at the Pine Tree ISD Community Center.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Snotty? Ms. Williams?
Great to see Mills on Wheels here tonight. I'm sorry, not Mills on Wheels, Citizens on Patrol. Mills on Wheels is my slide. Hold on. Great to see y'all tonight. You know, I'm just saying. Sunday, myself and Councilmember Snotty had the pleasure of being at East Cotton Street Church of Christ. They made a presentation to the City of Canton in their disaster relief efforts as well as to Longview Mills on Wheels. That's what was going through my brain. So it was a really great presentation, and, and I just wanna give a shout out to East Cotton Street for that as well. I have a town hall meeting coming up with Shan Bauer, our district's overlay. She is the LISD trustee that overlays District 3. It will be Tuesday, August 22nd, 6:00 PM, at Brockton Recreation Center. We're kinda doing it as a back-to-school, find out what's on everybody's mind, so please come out, share with a friend, love to see everybody. And I think we'll, we won't have donuts, Councilwoman Moore, but we may have some cookies. So please come out and join us. And, and last but not least, just, y'all continue to pray for our country, our state, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shihara?
Just one, I wanted to say thank you to Thierry Jackson and anyone that was involved in taking care of the Eden Care Specialty stuff. I wish I had enough thought to have sent a picture, but if you haven't driven by recently, please drive by at the, that wonderful corner of Eden, Tryon, and 259. And you will see that the building is mostly gone and most of the trash is picked up, but it is a much better view, and I'm very grateful to everyone in the city that works so hard to make that happen. So, exciting news.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Pirtle?
I had the opportunity today to go by Chick-fil-A that they're rebuilding over on Gilmore Road, and I visited with, his name's Randy Dowling, he's a job superintendent there. And he was very, very complimentary of our Bell Mel Services staff in our inspection department. He couldn't say enough, and he's looking forward to doing the one on Fourth Street in the near future. And I wanna thank Mark Savassa, the head building official, and Dennis Williams, Terry Russell, Todd Keibom, Ryan Melton, and Ralph Jenkins, and they all worked on there, and he knew every one of them by name. And that goes along with BJ's that Dr. Mack had last year of where we brought them in here, and they came in and they were very complimentary of that. And this is just an example of why we need these inspectors because there's a lot of overtime going on here, and they're paying for it out of, out of their budget and, but they're turning jobs that we need and they're turning tax base that we need here. So I really, I really do appreciate them being so complimentary of these folks.
Thank you, Mr. Pirtle. Mr. Willard? Well, murder mystery event, Come Solve the Case, The Murder at the Library, Saturday, July 29th, from 7 to 9. More information at 237-1349. Ages 18 and older, please. I would like to invite residents to join me for a virtual town hall meeting on Tuesday, August 1st, at 7:00 PM. It's going to be an opportunity to discuss any issues, ideas, questions you might have for me about our city, from all the conveniences of your home or your smartphone. The virtual town hall meeting will be broadcast live on the City of Longview Facebook page and on City View Municipal Television and on LongviewTexas.gov. You can submit questions in advance or during the event by sending an email to mayor@longviewtexas.gov. Also be able to submit questions or comments during the meeting on the city's Facebook page. Learn more at longviewtexas.gov/vtm. I'm really looking forward to this. I don't know how it's gonna go. Once again, I'm not an IT guy. I thank goodness all the guys in, in our corner are. But I think it's gonna be fun to be able to communicate with the community and not have to go anywhere. I think maybe we'll, it may be a flop, it may be great. We'll have to wait and see how that works out. But I'm excited about doing it, and I appreciate the staff who's working very, very hard to make this, this opportunity come, come to. Veterans Plaza, Teague Park, help honor our American veterans. Vet dot, www.vetplaza.org. Give me your $5. Go and donate to the Veterans Plaza. Upcoming events, there are several upcoming events throughout the community, Longview Kennel Club, AKC Dog Show, the 29th of July, from 9 to 5, at Mon Cobb Activity Center. Arts View, Pirates of Penzance Junior Performance, July 27th to 29th, at 7 or 2:00 PM on the 29th and 30th. And of course, this weekend, the Great Texas Balloon Race, July 28th to 30th. For more information on any of these events, go to visit longviewtexas.com and learn more. If y'all aren't excited about the balloon race, y'all just haven't been to the balloon race. It is, I just, I look forward to it every year. I don't care how hot it is, I don't care how much it rains, because it rained last year, it was hot last year, and it still went on without a hitch, and it's the best thing to go to on this weekend. So take your family out, your friends, you will really enjoy this event in Longview. It's such a, such an amazing event we have here to put on. Okay, survey question. And you can see why I had so much discussion this week about what we were talking about earlier because the survey question kinda mirrored this. Suggestion Mayor Task Force on Homelessness was presented to our community. Which ideas do you feel are most enthusiastic about seeing implemented in Longview? Service fairs, 5%. Homeless Outreach Team, 8%. Modified Park benches, 1%. Work program for those willing to work, 63%. Solicitation-free zones, 17%. So we're seeing where the community looks at this, and we had literally hundreds and hundreds of comments about this, about all aspects of it. And, and what I like to see is that each, each of these areas had merit. And you know, it's funny, the one that got the least amount of votes, the modified park benches, got the most comments this week. It was the main topic we had on Facebook. It was amazing. And I think, I think it's because it was a misconception of what it was about. So I'm glad we kinda had a chance to clear that up tonight. Next, our beloved Great Texas Balloon Race Festival kicks off this weekend at East Texas Regional Airport. Which event are you most excited about participating in? Kids Activities, 2%. Balloon Glow, 23%. Nightly Concerts, 8%. Seeing the beautiful balloons floating all over East Texas, bam, 66%. Who doesn't love that? I just absolutely look forward to tomorrow morning. I can't wait to get up, get outside, drink my coffee, and watch those balloons fly over Longview. It's, it's just a gorgeous thing. It's a testament to our city, to the volunteers, the people that put that event on. It is really a fantastic event, and I cannot wait to see that happen. Along with this homeless task force, we, we talked tonight about a lot of things that we are going to be facing in our community as far as implementation. And I've told y'all before, I'm not a person that likes to sit around and, and talk about something, I like to do things. And so we're going to have a first-ever, in Longview, a Go-Giver Gala. Remember our Go-Giver book that we had? Remember we had so many people that contributed to the Go-Giver Fund and people who have really stepped up in our community? We're gonna have an event on Saturday, January the 7th, at 6, at 7:00 PM, January 6th, at 7:00 PM at Mon Cobb, to honor some of the Go-Givers that have really stepped up in our community. And I plan on selling this event out. I hope I'm not overstepping my expectations, but I think we're gonna sell it out. It's gonna be a fun event. We're gonna have live auction, no silent auction. We're gonna have dinner, we're gonna have dancing, we're gonna have all the things that make it a special event, and we're gonna honor some people that have really stepped up in our community. And here's the great thing about this event. We're looking for sponsors. You can see right there sponsorship information. Contact our event chair, Ms. Julie Brigati Woods, who's sitting in the back, who has so graciously agreed to chair this project. We're gonna be getting sponsorships, and 100% of this benefit from this project will be for our homeless project that we're trying to fund. And nothing has been done like this in Longview, where we have an event to help fund something that we need to do in our community. And I think the community's gonna stand up and stand out on this. And we've been working on this for, well, at least a day and a half now. The concept we've been working on for a while, but we've been working on sponsors for a day and a half, and I can tell you right now, right there, we've got over $50,000 in sponsors already committed in a day and a half. And we haven't even begun to, to, to hit this, this thing. And so I am so thrilled that this community wraps its arms around those that need their arms wrapped around them. And we're going to raise a lot of money here, and we're gonna put it towards this initiative of trying to fund these officers, trying to fund our park benches, to try to do the things that, that we as a council need to do. And so I'm glad you all agreed on the things tonight, otherwise this slide would've not been any good. Kind of squirming for a little bit, but we're gonna make this an event that Longview is going to remember, and it's gonna all go towards our homeless, our homeless implementation. So here's our, some of our gold sponsors, our silver sponsors. And I told you all before the meeting, I was gonna call you all out, and here's what I'm gonna call you out on. I'm gonna ask each one of you all to make contacts, to get sponsorships for this event. Each one of y'all know people that can do this and want to do this and want to help. And so I want to see us as a council, as a unified council, going out into our community to get people to help our community. And if you can't, if you can't donate to people that, that are need, I'm gonna say it once, I'm gonna say it a thousand times, this is where it's time to put your money where your mouth is. If you wanna help the homeless people in Longview, quit texting me on Facebook, quit complaining to me, you sponsored this event because this is how we're gonna pay for those things that need to be done. So put your money where your mouth is. I'm gonna put mine where my mouth is, and I hope everybody else will too, because this is something that we need to do to help this community. So I'm excited about it.